is Eric Weber, sorry you're
No, you're good.
And Sheila Franklin, Jay E golf,
Daniel Andriani, and David Hill.
Okay, and I thought what we would do is the folks are going to spend five to seven minutes introducing themselves and talking about why they're running. I will be, are you going to time them? Oh, okay.
If we're going over some minutes, I'll stand up.
Okay, all right, all right, that sounds great. And we thought we would start with the district, um, two folks first and then district five. So, um,
for coming out today, especially in the rain and the drizzle and whatnot. Um, I'm Sheila Franklin, um, best known in the town of Fletcher, um, been on town council for, this is my fourth term. Uh, I am now mayor pro tem, my family tells me I need to tell that, but to me, the council position is a lot more important than that. Um, I am a mom, I'm a grandmother, um, and I'm a retired educator just in the last, uh, last year. And I am running, which is very important for you to know, because I absolutely love my county, where we live, where we work. And it's not that I need another job, for sure. Uh, my family keeps me busy and when I retired, I just didn't, I can't understand why people say, oh, you're gonna be, you're gonna be bored, aren't you? And I'm like, no, there's plenty to do. And I, I don't think that our county is in a bad way, I just think we could do it a little bit better. And, uh, because I love where we live and, you know, what we're doing here, I'd just like to be able to improve it just a little bit better. Um, I think I have, uh, some strengths working with communities and, uh, being able to get a seat at the table to look for that win-win. And I think that's what most communities need, because each community is different. And, um, I recognize that. I serve on several boards, I think that would be important for you to know, um, because sometimes I forget to mention that. Uh, for several years, I've been working on Partnership for Economic Development, which has everything to do with what industries come to our area. I also work on Water and Sewer Advisory Board, uh, which is run by the city of Hendersonville, but of course, we each have a, you know, we have different areas that are represented on that board as well. And I'm also on the MSD Board, which is a regional board, and I was appointed by the county. And so I go to those meetings as well, so. Uh, but more importantly, I would want you to know that not only am I serving on these boards and working for Henderson County every day, I'm always looking for what each community needs and hoping that I could have a seat at the table to represent, uh, more communities, other towns, and what their needs are and how we could benefit them from the county as a commissioner position. Thank you.
Now, I'm not as good as everybody else, so I have a few notes here. First of all, thanks for everybody for coming here, thanks for all the participants up here. This is a big, big crowd, so thanks for coming. Hi folks, my name is Jay E golf, and I'm running for county commissioner. Let me first tell you a little bit about myself, what questions I would ask a potential commissioner, and then what objectives I will work with other commissioners. My family moved to Henderson County in 1972, and as a result, I'm a product of county elementary, junior, and high schools. I attended UNC Chapel Hill, graduating with a degree of science, with a bachelor's degree of science in business administration. I married Jennifer Jones in 2001, and we're the proud parents of three children, one in college, one in high school, one in junior high. I'm the current school board chair, I've won both my elections, being the top vote getter in 2022, and this shows the confidence that people have in me to get the job done. I originally sought this, this school board position because I saw red flags dealing with education in 2017, and it dealt with my children, so I got involved. My experience on the school board has given me an understanding of working with other school board members and an excellent understanding of the county's largest employer and the largest single item on the budget. And with great success, I helped champion free breakfast and lunch for all of our children. It's hard to teach hungry children. I also learned to work effectively with the board of commissioners and the public to work towards win-win situations. Some say, why are you running? Well, I saw county-wide red flags, some as early as 2021, but now they concern my family, your family, and the, everyone else in Henderson County. We are living in a rapidly changing world, and Henderson County is one of the fastest-growing counties in the state of North Carolina, and there are no signs this is going to change anytime soon. This rapid growth is putting pressure on county infrastructure, land utilization, and services. Some just finished battling a proposed asphalt plant in East Flat Rock. Others battled storage units in the Crab Creek area, and still others are currently fighting density and growth concerns right here in Edouard. Also, lands devoted to agricultural, agriculture will soon disappear if no action is taken. And don't just take my word for it, reach out to the Edouard communities, the Crab Creek communities, the Friends of East Flat Rock, the leaders in the farming community, and get their opinion. I did, and that's why I know we need to make a change. Now, these issues might not affect you, but imagine something, something comes up right beside your house, or right beside your neighborhood, and there's a weak comprehensive land use plan, which our commissioners are just getting ready to adopt with little zoning. Property values could be affected, and when they do, you'd wish you'd gone down a different path. Just think about it. We're at a crossroad, which way are we gonna go? This election is about that opportunity to change. There's a mistaken philosophy held by some that a smaller, less restricted government will make life easier for all. This might have been true decades ago, but unguided growth only causes more problems and makes solutions more costly in the future. As a concerned voter, these are some of the questions I would ask and want to know how my commissioner feels. The commissioners continue to talk about farmland protection, but then, has the language removed that would do just that? Would you approve and vote for the protection of farm, of farmland? My answer is, I know not only would protect farmland, I would strengthen the zoning to protect farmland. Anybody can say what they want on social media, but then do the exact opposite by removing language protecting farmland. How does your commissioner feel about the land development code that limits parcel of land to one, only one building per acre? I would support this, but it was overturned by our county commissioners. Does your, does your commissioner support the ordinance to prevent additional filling of, of any floodplain? I would support that ordinance to protect, to prevent additional filling, but this also failed. And then finally, how do commissioners feel about open-use zoning? Which means one, what, which means one can do whatever one wants, no matter what effect it could have on, on an area or property. I would strongly oppose. You know, guys, neighbors have rights too. Here are a few objectives I will work to achieve with other county commissioners. I will support common sense, balanced zoning, and smart growth. Henderson County will no doubt continue to grow. I will support the comprehensive land use plan, as it was originally written with a lot of public input. I will work to protect wildlands, fields, and forests to preserve open space again, as public surveys show. I will work to ensure that future development does not diminish property values, but this cannot be accomplished with sprawl, which will occur without proper zoning. I will work to update and modernize aging schools so they continue to produce the high-quality education to the future citizens of our county. You know how I've done serving the school board, that effort will continue on the board of commissioners. I will periodically meet with communities and municipalities of the county to explain issues and seek their input. I will work with the Acoustic Trail Advisory Committee to bring about the vision for the trail as soon as possible. I will work with county planners to find ways to bring more affordable workforce housing to the county. And finally, I will support the effort by the Edouard community to incorporate, to be the, to be the best, to the best of my ability as commissioner, and help direct the Edouard community to resources to pursue this goal. This election is about choice and change. Support Jay E golf for county commissioner. Thank you.
Thank y'all for coming out. Kind of grew night. Thank y'all for hosting us, and, uh, but, all right, I'm not a, a great public speaker, so, uh, but, uh, I'm David Hill, I'm your current District Five County Commissioner. A little bit about me, I'm a native, born and raised here, grew up in Big Hungary, live in Green River now. Married a Green River girl, had two beautiful daughters. Me and my wife, uh, we've been married thirty-two years, I think it is. I think I got that right. She nodded at me. So, uh, you know, went through public school here, uh, even went to Rose Edwards when I was, uh, uh, going into school, Mills River, and Dana had burned, so that's where I had to go to elementary school after the first couple of years. Then, you know, went through Dana, Flat Rock, and East. I'm a graduate, and when I get to university now, this college back in my day, kind of shows you how old I am. As a profession, I am a land surveyor. I am also active in my community habitat. Like I say, we live in Green River community now. Uh, I was the Green River Community Association President for ten years plus, uh, long time. Uh, you know, we got a great little community down there, and the, the association's very active. Uh, we help with Tuxedo Park, uh, you know, I've been a strong supporter of the park since I've been on the board, but, uh, you know, getting back to my, my profession, you know, I'm a land surveyor. I've been in land surveying since the early nineties. Uh, got licensed in ninety-seven, opened my business, bought out a gentleman, a friend of mine, in ninety-nine, so I've been in business since nineteen ninety-nine. It's local business, I'm in East Flat Rock. Uh, I've worked in Henderson County all these years, so I've been from one corner of Henderson County to the other, uh, surveying, uh, you know, I deal with the LDC that was mentioned, okay? LDC is about four hundred pages, so, you know, there's a lot of rules and regs in there, so I, I see how that, that ordinance affects you trying to use your property. So I see instances where, you know, you can't just come through with a plug, okay? So, in my career, I've had to help guide people through this, and I guide them through it by the rules. I believe in going by the rules. I put my hand on the Bible and I swore an oath of this, Constitution of the United States, Constitution of the State of North Carolina. You know, I operate within those rules. I may not agree with all of them, but I have to operate that way, that's the way that it is. So, you know, protects myself and protects my clients. You know, I have a board of, uh, engineers and surveyors, they watch over us, you know, if I make mistakes, you know, they'll come and they'll discipline us, so, you know, that's why, you know, but that, the main reason why is because that's the way I was raised, you know. Uh, I'm a Christian conservative, I am conservative. I believe that, uh, limited government is the best way, you know. A heavy-handed government costs money, okay? It costs dearly, because the more the government does, the higher your taxes go, okay? I have tried to be, and I think I have been fiercely conservative on the board. As, uh, it's been said, when I came up on the board, the county was in good shape, and it's still in good shape. We have a double A bond rating. You know, the county, we do not go out and borrow money easily. You know, we have to go through the, uh, local government, or the state's government association, we have to get their approval, but that bond rating is what keeps our interest rates low and keeps your taxes low when we go to build schools, when we go to build parks, and everything like that. You know, I grew up on a farm, my grandmother had a farm, I still own part of that farm, that farm is still active. So I know about farming, I've worked, and I support farmers, and it's going to be a multifaceted approach. You know, there's, there's a conservation side to it, but we've got to bring market to, uh, in Henderson County for our farmers, we've got to bring ag industries in here, so it's not just conservation effort, it has to be a multifaceted approach, because if you don't have that market, and we don't have, in another part of the education system, Blue Ridge has a, uh, I think they just started up their apprenticeship program at the farm. So we have to have that educational aspect of it too. So, you know, I look at stuff from how it affects me and my family, and you and your family, you know, it's not just how it hits the developers. I know that's, it's, uh, it's just the way I view things, that's who I am, and I am who I am. I'm consistent. If I tell you that I'm this, I am who I am. You know, I don't change my votes. If I voted, uh, if something's down along the same line, and, you know, you're pretty much gonna know how I'm gonna vote on it. So, you know, I appreciate y'all's time, and I, I'm so thankful to be here. And, uh, you know, if y'all ever want to talk to me, you know, all you gotta do is call, send me an email, I'm always gonna take it. The Lions Club has had me here before, and I was appreciative of those folks that were here, so, uh, but thank y'all again for coming.
What's your phone number? What's your phone number?
I'll have to look it up on that, but if you want to call my personal, it's eight-two-eight-six-nine-nine-five-one-nine-eight. The county one, I'd have to look that up for you, I'll have to memorize it. So, but, uh, you know, I'm always available, you know, I have my own business, so I work, but I always take time, so, thank y'all again, have a good night.
Hi, everyone, I am Annette Hutter, I've been, uh, living in Edouard for a little over a year, and didn't really know what I was getting myself into when, uh, you know, the RV park news hit, and, um, I'm really fortunate to be part of this community, I'm, I'm super thankful. Oh, yes, that's a good idea, thanks for doing that today. So, um, we have prepared some questions that we sent out to the candidates on Friday, so we're gonna do the next forty-five to fifty-minute Q and A, um, but before all of that, I wanted to start off by thanking the Lions Club for hosting us, thank you so much. So, like I said, we're gonna take the next forty-five to fifty minutes for Q and A. Um, we ask that you keep your answers brief and to the point, as we will be opening this up to questions from the audience at the very end, so we want to leave a little bit of time at the end as well. Uh, not every question will be asked of every candidate, but we will be asking that the incumbents go first when it's their turn. And also, a quick reminder, we are trying to, oh goodness, you don't have to show me. We are trying to stream this on Facebook, it's going in and out, but we're also, uh, videoing it as well, so those will be available after the fact. So, with that, we will start off with question number one, and this is gonna go to David Hill and Jay E golf. So, schoolchildren in Edouard feed into West Henderson High School, which is in need of replacement or repair. We have seen over seventy million dollars spent on Hendersonville High School. Would you support the modernization of older schools?
Uh, the answer to that's yes, and we are currently working on West High, so, uh, it's, uh, securing the building for a single entry, you know, to, uh, that safety aspect of it. We've also installed cameras at all the schools now, working with the school board to do that. Um, we have the NCTs, Maintenance Technologies Repair and Security, which is, uh, an additional, uh, underneath the current budget, we rolled it underneath the current tax rate. So, but that's money to go to maintain our schools. And, uh, like I say, I went to East, the East is old, needs a lot of work, or, you know, a new building, you know, I guess that's to be saying West, Edouard Elementary, uh, Flat Rock Junior High, I wrote, yes, I mean, that's, that's part of what the commissioners, uh, the state law, we have to provide those facilities, and, uh, we've worked well with the school board to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Jay?
Would you support the rebuilding of older schools? Of course I would. But you have to look at, you have to be a good steward of taxpayer dollars. You have to look at repair or replace. Uh, what would be more cost-effective? You look at the structural integrity, if that's okay, you're not gonna repair it, you have to replace it if it has faulty structural integrity. But if it's okay, that's fine, repair it. Common items to repair are safety, ADA, uh, complacency, uh, current technology, if that's acceptable, uh, but what, what David said is correct, we are spending about five million dollars on West right now to cameras, security, and much more, so five million dollars is coming your way.
All right, thank you. Okay, next question, this is now to Daniel Andriata, Sheila Franklin, and Eric Weber. Henderson County needs more housing, particularly for the middle-class supporting schools, retail, trade, and retiring senior citizens. What should the county do to address the need for middle-class housing?
So, uh, housing is probably one of the most common questions that we get in one form or another. Uh, you know, if you, to me, if you look at the, the workforce housing of our county, and I'm not, anyone who works is part of the workforce, and I know we have a large retirement community, I know we have a large retirement community here in Edouard, who is the workforce in Henderson County the biggest lane? That would be your teachers, your law enforcement officers, your firefighters, your paramedics, your nurses, uh, your manufacturing workers, we have over a hundred manufacturing facilities in Henderson County, uh, and that would be your service technicians in your trades, heating and air plumbing, things like that. That's the widest lane of your workforce, and they all have a reasonably consistent average income. So, uh, that's the biggest lane of housing that probably needs to be met. Um, we have a wonderful workforce development here in this county that does attract industry. Why do I go to that? Because as it attracts industry, they're required to take the average wages up with every economic development project. So the first thing you do to address housing is you get the wages up as much as you can with, you know, government kind of out of the way, but we can set the table. We also have the Housing Assistance Corporation here. All of those, all of those career fields that I just mentioned can work through Housing Assistance, they don't make, they're not incomeed out at the top, they can work through Housing Assistance, and it's a great organization to help especially first-time homebuyers, they also help veterans, senior adults, even with repairs. There are two homes being built right now, uh, just north of town off of Stony Mount Road last summer, the, I got a party hospital, and I said, hey, you own these two lots in this neighborhood, you probably don't need them, Housing Assistance is always looking for lots. And so I said, would you sell them to them? And would you sell them at a rate they can afford to buy them? So they did. What does that mean? That means that this Christmas, two families will have their first Christmas in their new home. Homeownership is a springboard to change lives. Um, I don't know that you want the government in the air quote "housing" business, but I will tell you that, uh, there is a lot that can be done here in this county, uh, for housing, we just gotta try to promote and bolster that more.
Sheila?
Um, in response to that, uh, it's wonderful to get the wages up, and after speaking to the Sheriff's Department and, uh, first responders that I've been in touch with and some other entities, they make sure that their wages are at a level that's, uh, what you could live off of. The problem is, after talking to Housing Assistance, is that they might be a little bit overqualified, so the discrepancy is still there. Um, and if you forgive me for looking at my notes, because I, I know if I don't, I'll get off task, but, um, anybody, anytime I talk to someone about workforce housing, uh, or they want to talk about affordable housing, uh, the talk always involves multi-family housing, and there will always be a need for multi-family apartment complexes, but I do not view this as a solution in of itself. Um, working-class families, they want a home with a yard, it may not be a big home or a big yard, but these are things that they would like to be able to have, a little bit of investment, because when they go into an apartment, they can't wait to be able to get out, and if the rent is so high, then they have no way to get out. And so I think that we need to be actively recruiting and encouraging those developers that have a vision for smaller pocket neighborhoods, uh, that gives the feel of a neighborhood instead of all the luxury homes that cater to people that want to move here. Uh, we can't always control the way that growth happens, but we can definitely be the driving force when we seek opportunities, uh, for better options. Thank you.
Eric?
Thank you. I'm a little further out, I was here. I agree with a lot of the things that were said. I do, uh, I guess take issue with the idea that we, that public, uh, employees are making enough money right now to afford housing, I mean, I'm living in, um, two people are working in a home, and, and we have three children, and we can't afford a house here. So, that's another issue. Um, I think that in order to create housing, we need to collaborate with other municipalities, municipalities within Henderson County, we have to work with Hendersonville, we have to work with Fletcher, Mills River, um, and look at areas that have infrastructure already in place, where we can build up and not out. You know, people that are needing, uh, lower cost of housing, a lot of them, uh, don't have transportation, they can't afford both. So we need to put this, these houses on areas that are rundown, uh, that are, are buildings that are not being used anymore, that are on, uh, county transit lines. One other issue that I see in my daily work, oh, go ahead.
Is that better? Oh, look at that. I just, I, I feel magical all of a sudden. I just started yelling. Um, so wow, now I have to tone it down a little bit. Uh, where was I? Oh, so in my daily job, um, you know, I'm going out and I'm seeing, uh, permitting things, and what I'm seeing in Buncombe County, and it was the same in Henderson County, is that you have large national companies coming in, uh, either buying up old houses or building new houses because they can afford it, and they, these large companies have multiple Airbnbs that they're using within our county. I believe it's a supply and demand issue, I believe that in order to get housing prices down, we need to increase supply. So high-density housing is gonna do that to some level. I do believe that, you know, personal property rights are important, a lot of people make their living by flipping houses locally, so if you're a resident of Henderson County or Western North Carolina, I believe that you should be, have the right to have an Airbnb and make money off of it, but I do think there should be, we should put limitations on that, um, and not allow companies from out of state to, to, uh, get involved with Airbnbs and taking housing away from, uh, people that live and work here every day, so.
Thank you. All right, so this next question is for David, Jay, and Eric again. So, this is a longer intro, so Redbird is a company based out in St. Louis, Missouri, and it's under contract to purchase several package plants in the county, including the Edouard Sewer Company. They also may be taking ownership of any new wastewater treatment plant being built here. The concern is sewer rates could triple in the next few years if their proposals are approved by the State Utilities Commission. Even if they are not immediately approved, residents could be fighting excessive rates in the future. So the question to the three of you is, should the county work with the city of Hendersonville to create a sewer district to handle the turnover of these private, privately-run sewer package plants?
Well, if you're referring to, uh, you know, the purchase, uh, that's a private entity, de-private entity purchase right now, which falls underneath the State Utility Commission, they have to approve that. Any rates that, uh, they have or increases have to go through the Utilities Commission. So, uh, we are currently trying to work with the city to work with them as far as, uh, working together on the current system they have. Now, their system can't run out here because of the basins, because of the topography, but if you want to do that, then you've got to pump into their system, you know, the Hendersonville system. So, uh, you know, we are working on that, but, uh, you know, as far as, you know, the Edouard system right now, uh, you know, I would love for the county to have it, you know, to buy it if we could, you know, that would, uh, you know, but the thing with that is if we buy it, then it comes, there's compliance issues and stuff that we would have to make sure, which would be good for y'all, because it would have to be, you know, the standards are different if we owned it, or the city owned it versus the private entities, so, but, uh, yeah, you know, right now, as it stands, it's at the Utility Commission's hands, and that's just the way, you know, that's how it is at the moment. But, you know, the county, uh, you know, the best way we can, you know, direct growth and stuff is through sewer. Sewer's big, water's big, but sewer's bigger. Uh, you know, the drain fields and stuff, you know, to do, if you owned a lot, to have a, a proper lot size with a well and septic, it's gonna take you about three-quarters acre minimum, you can fit them in a little tighter, but, uh, you know, that opens up, when you bring in sewer, it, it, it's what opens up more housing and stuff, housing options, because then you're, you can have more density as far as that, if, if you're looking to direct that growth that way, or bring your industry out to an area.
Okay. Jay? Yeah, so I'll just repeat the question again, so should the county work with the city of Hendersonville to create a sewer district to handle the turnover of these privately-run sewer package plants?
Well, this is an important question, and it affects not only Edouard, but the rest, but a lot of Henderson County. Uh, I, yes, I believe they should be turned over, package plants will always fail, there's no point in building another one that's gonna fail, it just depends on how old they are and how much they're used. But we need representatives from the city and the county getting together on this, and like I said, this is an important distinction, but I do support a sewer commission made up of both city and county officials.
up of both city and county officials. And I've talked to city, different city and county officials currently, and there's an example in Forsyth County of the exact same issues Henderson County and Edouard have. They created a combined utilities. We're looking up on the internet. It's called Winston-Salem Forsyth County Utilities. It's, it's a, it's a, it's how they combine, and they're working together, and it's a roadmap that is out there, and we can follow it, and I would support that.
Thank you. Eric? Oh, yeah, once we get the mic to you. Not sure about this time.
You could do that.
Yeah.
Okay. Are you okay at home? Okay. Go back, you're getting up there. That's my moment of fame.
All right, same question? Okay. So, I agree with a lot of what was said. I believe that, you know, the collaborative effort, what Jay referenced, in Forsyth County, I was just watching the meeting, the joint meeting that took place last year between the city and the county, and I believe that the opportunity to work together, that's something that I always support. I think that the situation is unique with Hendersonville, and it's not unique with Hendersonville and Henderson County. It's happening all over the country. You know, you start with utilities built within a city, and as, as it expands, it becomes a part of the county, and, and the things, the, what happens in the city and the county affect each other. So, why not have representation of both? In terms of the privatization of it, I don't necessarily like the idea of taking away public jobs, and I like to maintain control of our rates. But I do think that could possibly, possibly be done with representation on a utility commission, but I, I think I would have to hesitate on privatizing it right now, so.
Okay. Thank you. All right, so this next question goes to Daniel and Sheila. Starting to notice the back and forth here, our little pattern. All right, so regarding the 2045 Comprehensive Plan, the public survey results gathered early in the planning process overwhelmingly call for the protection of wildlands, fields, and forests often referred to as open space. How will you respond to the survey results calling for the protection of these open spaces?
So, you, you've got two or three approaches there. A lot of land in the county is and/or could possibly be voluntarily placed in by the owner in conservation. That's an option that the owner has, who owns the land, and then it would be, of course, protected and kept in open land, or in open space. You also have a lot of farmland that, I think sometimes people mention open land, open space, woodlands, farmland, so I'm gonna parse those out. You've got a lot of open land, you've got a lot of fields, a lot of woods, and I think that we could bolster that by promoting more tourism and activities in those things, you know, some more, you know, support more hiking, outdoor activities, whatever it might be. We got the best mountains, we got the best rivers, we got the best forest around anywhere. So, you've got voluntary options, you've got conservation easements. Unless, you know, the government owns the land, it's a little hard to get super, super heavy-handed there, frankly. And that sometimes, it's, you gotta balance what everyone wants with landowner rights, and, you know, I, I get the whole thing there. But I think that, I know it's a draw. It's a draw for visitors to come here. It's a draw for people to come here to live. And so, I think so far, we have done pretty good at that. No doubt, there's some acreage somewhere that something got built on that someone didn't want, but we still have a lot here that is preserved.
...of changing weather conditions in the 2045 Comprehensive Plan. Do you believe the county government should be developing adaptation and mitigation strategies and plans should weather become more severe, for example, more excessive rainfall like we've had lately? And we'll just kind of go down the road and start with you. Yes or no, or if you want to expand a little?
Okay, well, the answer is, you know, the simple answer is no. You know, again, I'm a conservative, you know, but, you know, we do live with changing weather constantly. I've seen it change. You know, I think that there's this big yellow ball in the sky that has more to do with it than we do. But, you know, right now, you know, with stormwater use rules and stuff that we have like that, you know, the state already mandates a lot of stormwater stuff, that we have to retention, bio-retention, things of that nature. So, you know, I'm not a climate change activist or alarmist, but I mean...
I think there are some wise, life-handed guidelines that we could implement. I don't think we need to view whatever the worst weather conditions are and always regulate backwards from that, because, you know, we're already overbuilt, probably, if that's the case. So, you gotta, you gotta balance that. And I also know that topics, everything in government cuts both ways. Everything, at least it can. And I try to sit at every seat around the table and view every topic from every viewpoint. All of these things have a place to some degree and may be needed, but every time you do things like this, do you think you're making housing less or more affordable? So, you gotta balance that as well. But I have not seen a government yet that can regulate the weather. We can only respond to best we can and try to keep our people safe, have good building guidelines, and, and go from there. And Henderson County, you know, I've said before, Henderson County obviously knows how to do Henderson County well, because for the last 50 years, everybody wants to come here. And so, you know, I think that there's always room for improvement, but I think we strike a good balance.
Jay?
Let me, let me, this question is, do you believe the county government should be developing adaptation and mitigation strategies and plans should weather become more excessive? Correct?
Correct.
Well, my answer is yes. If you want more of an answer, I'm gonna say heck yes. You know, and building in the floodplains, which we've just decided to do, will only exacerbate this.
Well, when I looked at that question, I literally just wrote the word "yes," and then I got tickled thinking about it, because I'm thinking, you'll just leave it sitting right there. But to me, that would be an absolute yes. It's being proactive instead of reactive. And I think I've said quite a bit in the last debate about the flooding. This needs to be addressed, given the fact it will not get any better. Every project brought forth should be analyzed and based on what the property can reasonably handle, and that would be without the filter. And requirements that would mitigate the worst possible weather scenarios, because we're not having 100-year floods, 500-year floods. Now, we're having like 20- and 50-year floods. And so, absolutely yes, we should look forward and be proactive, not reactive, to our flood issues.
So, my degree is in environmental science, so I firmly have studied and understand climate change. Do I think it's real? Absolutely. Do I think that we are attributing to it with the way that we're building right now? Absolutely. Development in floodplains was brought up. The day that that, at that meeting where they voted on that, it was discussed that only 2% of the land is being affected by that change. And what's the big deal? I look at it the other way. It's 2%, we need to preserve that and protect that, because that, what's happening on those lands may not affect that property, but it's affecting the neighbors downstream. And that's where property rights, it's a problem. In terms of cleanup, who's paying for the cleanup every time we have a flood event? We are, taxpayers. We need to make change for that. And yes, we need to address ways to mitigate this in the Comprehensive Plan and Land Development Code. We need to focus on, when we preserve land, utilizing native shrubs, native trees. Why not? I mean, that's, that's what I say, why not? Is it gonna hurt anything? No. So, that's the way that I think we should move forward, addressing climate change and moving forward for land planning.
All right, thank you, everyone. All right, next question, and actually, we're doing really good on time, so I'm kinda tickled here. Next question's for David, Jay, and Eric. So, the citizens of Edouard Field, they have had little or no representation by the Board of Commissioners. No attempt has been made to sound citizens out on various issues. If elected or re-elected Commissioner, how would you obtain constituent input?
Thank you. We're always open, and it's like I said before, we know. Call, send me an email, you know. I've been here at the Lions Club before, you know. I'm happy to come out and meet in groups. Always have been. I've always been accessible, you know. I guess, you know, we could set up a regular schedule, you know, come ever, see me annually or something, come here to Lions Club or something like that. You know, the Lions Club is gracious to, you know, have me out here. I think more than two times, I don't remember. But, you know, I just thoroughly enjoyed it. I always enjoy hearing from folks. I'm always willing to talk to people. And I try to respond to emails, you know, at least, you know, acknowledge that I did receive it. And, you know, and I do read them, you know. I don't just, you know, hit them and say, you know, "Thank you." You know, I do read through them. And sometimes we get a lot of them and everything. But, you know, that's, that's part of it, you know, is being accessible, you know. But we do serve the whole county, you know. So, this is just not about Edouard. Anybody in the county that has any, any issue, you know, please call me. You know, I'm always happy to meet and talk with folks.
Jay?
Well, first of all, I'm, I'm sorry if the citizens of Edouard Field, they have little or no representation, because that is District 5, and that's who we're serving. But I will say, I've already started to change this. I've talked with friends of East Flat Rock, I've talked to the Edouard Valley Preservation Society, I've talked with Cary O'Kane, Mayor of Laurel Park, that's also in my district, and we already have a date set. I'm on the agenda, and I will talk with Laurel Park at their next council work session. And I will promise to attend various municipal and community meetings, including, including the school board. But it's very important to be in touch with your constituents, and I firmly agree with that.
So, I, I do apologize if you feel like you've been underrepresented or underserved. That's, that's what functional government looks like, is, you know, the residents speaking and, and your representatives taking action. I've based my campaign highly on conversations and collaboration, and I firmly believe that, you know, through conversation, you can make change. And through conversation, I don't talk about just taking a phone call or an email or writing back. I think the idea of meeting in person, talking face-to-face, is extremely important, and you can get a lot accomplished. So, tonight is a great example of what I would continue to do if I were privileged to be elected Commissioner. I believe that a monthly situation where people can come and talk for an hour and a half makes perfect sense. You know, public comment is great, but we're not required to respond, right? So, that's, that's an issue. We need to have a conversation. It's just not you talking and me going back. So, I think that is where we need to move forward with it. My phone number is everywhere, my email address. I encourage you to contact me and have a conversation, whether you want to vote for me or not. I'd like to just hear what you have to, have to think about. That's important to me, so, yeah.
Thank you. All right, so this next question goes to Daniel and Sheila. The 2045 Comprehensive Plan was reviewed and worked on for over two years. There were over 7,000 survey responses from county residents, and the planning board worked on it for over a year before sending it to the county commissioners. The plan that is now up for a vote has been dramatically changed from the plan that was sent to the commissioners. Things such as farmland preservation have been reduced significantly. So, the question is, do you think it is important to contribute substantial revenues to a fund or look to other funding mechanisms on an annual basis that would pay for conservation easements on farmland?
So, several points on that. Typically, categorically, I'm not a fan of any arm of government using the phrase, "We're gonna create a fund," because your wallet just got thinner. Government doesn't have any money of its own. It only has your dollars that we taxed away from you, period. It's that simple. Farmland is more important to Henderson County than maybe a lot of other places, because it represents several, several needs. All right, we have agritourism. As far as farmland preservation, I heartily support it, but you gotta ask the what-if questions. I've talked with a lot of farmers who say, "I want to do whatever we can to keep my land in farming. My kids are coming up behind me. They want to continue the tradition." I've talked to other farmers who may be fifth, sixth, or seventh-generation farmer, and they told me, "I don't have anybody coming behind me. I'm it. This is it." So, they have a couple of options. They could sell their land for farm use, which will bring way less than maybe for some other use, and they probably need the most they can get out of that land, truth be told, when their farming days are over. So, I want to be just to them. To have farming, you have to have farmers. I think that a lot of, you know, I'm a business and finance guy. You want to fix a lot of problems, you, you get the revenue up. Anybody in business will tell you, revenue cures a lot of ills. And I want to see us support ways for farmers to have more avenues for revenue and more year-round revenue. Things like helping them with market and possibly as the if and as the greenhouse element in farming grows, that may help them, because you get year-round crop production there. We've talked a couple times about a farm-to-school program. I think if we're gonna get the taxpayers involved in farmland preservation, I've gotta, I've gotta answer the ones who aren't farmers when they say, "Okay, what's in it for me? You're making me a fourth investor," right? And they gotta have, some of them gotta have more than just the fact that they can drive us out.
No, I'll ask my last question, and then it looks like there's a long one. Okay, so, this last one is for David, Jay, and Eric. So, the 2020 and 2045 Comprehensive Plans both advocate for managing development at nodes and along corridors to utilize existing infrastructure. How do we balance what the Comprehensive Plan promotes in the individual rights of landowners?
Well, by nodes, what you're meaning is little areas out in Dana, we call it Five Points, you got a little store or something like that. It's kind of like, you know, I live out in the country. I live miles from state line. So, you know, we have Roscoe's, that's our store down there. So, that would be a node. We also, just a little further down the road, we have Dollar General plus the old community store. So, these nodes are more at your intersections of major roads, you know, like 25 and Green River, or Upper Road and Hired Gap. So, those are, you know, generally, if you look at the zoning map and everything, those are zoned, you know, the community commercial, there's another, it's not regional commercial, but any of those, another, another designation for commercial zoning in those areas, so that, you know, you allow for people to have stores, gas stations, you know, whatever, you know, because, you know, when I do my own plumbing, I usually have to go to town about five times. So, it's a pretty good haul to go all the way to Home Depot or, you know, whatever. So, but you're not gonna have a Home Depot there, but you see what I'm saying? You're gonna have, like right now, you know, Roscoe's carries, you know, your basic necessities, so does the Dollar General. So, that's what those are there for. As far as property rights, you know, I, I'm not sure exactly what they mean about that, because, you know, I don't know if they're talking about the area around that commercial little area, but there, those little nodes are good to have, because it saves travel time, it's a convenience thing. So, you know, if you're out of milk or eggs, you know, you ain't gotta drive all the way into Ingles. You know, you can, Roscoe's or, you know, the little stores around. And, you know, my office is in an old, you know, store from back in the 50s. The gentleman that I ran from his daughter, he ran that store for 50 years. And I've hated to see those go away. And, you know, these nodes allow for some of that to come back in, so.
Thank you. Jay?
So, the question is, how do we balance what the plan promotes and individual rights of landowners? This is a very difficult question. There's not one blanket answer that covers everything, but there is one answer that I have. This depends on a case-by-case basis, and largely depends on existing infrastructure. There's nothing that you can, there's not one answer that covers everything. But I will say that some commissioners, they do prefer open-yo zoning, so look up what that is, because that will create additional issues moving forward.
And Eric?
We've clicked the line, so I'm gonna answer quick. I agree, geez, look at that. I agree with Jay on that. I mean, open, open use, land use is not okay. I think you have to look at it case-by-case. There are situations where, you know, it could work to have development... There are situations where, you know, it, it could work to have development, commercial development within neighborhoods. Ultimately, I think it comes down to the neighborhood. So we have to have these conversations with these individual groups like we're doing tonight and figure out what exactly the residents want and move forward from that.
Okay, great, thank you. Thank you all for answering these questions. I think we, we learned a lot. So everybody that's behind me, I ask if you, when you get to the mic, if you could identify yourself and where you're from. And then also be clear on exactly who you would like to ask your question of, or if it's multiple people, just state that upfront so people know who's gonna answer. And with that.
Hi, my name is Vicki McCall Miller. I live between two homes, now one, on Canoe Road, having newly married, in Pinnacle Mountain. I just want to share with you, when you are a county commissioner in garnering revenue from homeowners, that the county, the tax assessors actually visit the properties. I'm trying to get a, my husband and I are trying to, trying to get an appointment with the tax assessors, which we've already had, but we are appealing. They did not visit the property. They saw no trespassing sign and left. Said they left a voicemail, which we did not get. There was no other effort to make arrangements to visit that property. They assessed the property. I won't go into a lot of detail, but there is virtually no house. They're projecting what the house would have been if construction had continued. They did not visit the property. We're gonna fight it. I know other people who are having issues. I assessed. It's not there anymore. They need to be a little more responsible. And one comment made to me, they haven't owned up to any of this. And they said, "If we make an exception for you, we have to make an exception for everyone." My point is, if it's wrong, it's wrong and it is stealing to evaluate a property that doesn't even exist or that is framed and unlivable. Okay, just, you know, that. And I have other things, I think I need to talk to you guys because I have other issues. And I am really tired.
Hi, my name's Kim Reed. I live in Gulf Mountain Estates here in Edouah. And before I ask the question, I need clarification. Mr. Weber, are you a District Five candidate or District Two?
District Two.
Okay, just wanted to make sure I got that right because I didn't want to leave you out on purpose. So my question is going to be for Mr. Hill and Mr. Egoff being District Five representatives. First of all, I'm sure everyone is aware that there's been a proposed development of the golf course. That goes without saying. Part of the process involved was to have multiple Board of Commission meetings. And one of the first ones was the compatibility meeting, which we had a tremendous amount of representation. We had a tremendous amount of comments and questions. Many of those questions were left unanswered. And so, Mr. Hill, I would like to ask, where were you? You were not present at that meeting and it was a District Five issue.
Well, this issue is not a commissioner issue. It was a planning board issue.
Are you not on the planning board?
No, ma'am.
Okay, are the commissioners not on the planning board?
We have a representative, but it's Mr. Laxley, not me.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. So, yeah, I'm not on the planning board.
So as a District Five issue and being a representative for a district, even though you're not on the planning board, and we talked earlier about hearing people and their concerns, would it not have been good to have been present at that meeting?
Well, you know, I do. The best, you know, we, we have our own boards and committees that we go to. So, you know, if we meet more than two apiece in a meeting, we have to have a special call meeting, so. But, you know, Mr. Laxley is our representative there. So he brings back that input that he learns there.
I don't think he was present. I think we just had the clerk and one person from the developer. So we had no representation.
Well, the planning board was there. There, there are.
The clerk, the clerk, was that it? That was it?
The clerk for who?
The clerk for the planning board. The compatibility.
Well, that would have been with the planning department.
Right. Well, we had, my question is, it was a District Five issue. We're District Five, it was an issue. And yet, we didn't have a representative present at that meeting and as a commissioner representing our area, do you not think that it would have been beneficial to have participated in that, even as an observation?
Well, like I say, you know, I'm not gonna come to those and speak because that's not, you know, my point, you know, observation. Yes, I do see that information and everything. But that's why we have the planning board, the planning department. They, they go out and they handle these issues for us and then they give us reports as to what, you know, what went on.
Okay.
But I understand your frustration, but.
Okay, Mr. Egoff, what would your commitment be as commissioner to participate in issues that involve District Five?
Well, I think I've already answered that, but I will answer it again just to make sure. But I've already started to change this and I've, I've already met, already met with friends of East Flat Rock. I've already met with Edouah Valley Preservation Society. That's in this district. I've already talked to Kerry O'Kane, Mayor of Laurel Park. He's in this district. I already have a date set among the agenda and I will promise to attend various municipal and community meetings, including the school board. And again, it's very important to be in touch with their constituents. I do want to say one thing about the planning board. The planning board voted to not fill in the floodplains. And yet, the floodplains are still filled in. So I don't, I, it seems, it just seems kind of funny to me that people fall back on the planning board and then they nominate people to be on the planning board and then the planning board tells them what they advise to do and then it's ignored, so.
So as a representative, I can show that that's.
Yes, as a representative, I will be glad to, to represent and talk to municipalities, community meetings, anything I can do to help Edouah, I'm there.
Okay. And if I could just, real quick, across the board, voting records, because you're the incumbents, how would you see yourself voting? Do you vote more in tendency for the developers or the residents?
Well, again, as a landscaper, you know, I see it from both sides.
But just your voting record?
My voting record, I am pro-business. I am, I'm also, you know, pro-personal rights and land.
Right, I was just talking about your voting record. Were you intended pro-business, Mr.?
I am very concerned.
And let me tell you, you can say bloody well anything you please because I have, right, fellas? They recognize me.
Right, we appreciate it, too.
Yeah, and the one thing that I want to say is, everybody always likes to say, "You can't stop progress." Well, I, I say, maybe you can. You can certainly slow it down. And what I don't want to see, what I was disappointed in in this 2045 land use plan was that originally, Edouah was targeted, almost the whole part of downtown, a large circle, was targeted for urban. Now, they changed the word to infill. But when the government changes a word on you, you have to be very suspicious. And they changed it to infill. And not, and infill is something like eight to 14 units per acre. So think about that. Now, this, as I noticed, changed, I believe, in the new map. And now it's transitional.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay? I know partially who on the board was instrumental in changing it from infill, which was eight to 14 units an acre, to transitional, which I believe is like two to four units an acre. Still a lot in one little acre. Were you fellows initially on board at changing Edouah from urban, infill, eight to 14 units an acre, which per the original map is what you had most of Edouah downtown? You know, you all can look on the 2045 land use plan. Were you guys for this change?
Yes, ma'am. If you look on my map, right.
Were you? Okay, because I know there was a couple of commissioners at the beginning that were.
He said yes.
Yeah, okay, and, and you, sir?
Yes.
Okay, okay, and you're not under oath, but.
Always under oath, always under oath. I'm gonna give an account one day.
But to a minute, yeah.
Maureen Heefe, I reside on Sports Village Drive in Hendersonville. And this is for Daniel. There seems to be confusion regarding recent changes to building in the floodplains. Could you explain your understanding of it, please?
Sure, so what we did was, and you have always been able to fill a certain percentage, depending on how much land you have, in a floodplain. There's a little bit of difference in a floodplain and a floodway. By the way, do you know what the difference, or excuse me, do you know what the definition of those words are? Technically, it's largely scientific best guess. There are some standards. Most of them come down from the feds. We all know how much the feds have their hand on the pulse of Henderson County, right? So we go, this would apply to mostly rural areas. Your cities, your municipalities, they have their own codes and ordinances, right? So think rural, maybe like around here where some of you live. You got a little bit of land, you got a creek or something like that. Most, maybe you didn't do it, but in its life, that creek has often had a little berm constructed on top of the creek bank. Basically, you're making the creek bank deeper, right? So guess what you did when you did that? You filled in a floodplain. Maybe a little technical, but you did. So where would this apply? First of all, there's no blanket change. What we did, and I don't even like this wording, but we opened the door for a landowner to come and say, "Hey, here's what I want to do in this potential area of my land. Here's my plan and here's why. Let us look at it case by case." Oh, she's sat down there. "Let us look at it case by case." All right, in the rural areas, maybe someone wants to put a pole barn type structure or a storage shed. May or may not be a farm, but it's just something for their own use. And I don't mean build it where it's hanging over the creek bank. Let's, let's, we're gonna use common sense. But maybe that person needs to, you know, get in that area just a little bit. By the way, we tax them on that land. We'll let them use as much of it as they can. So they're gonna come to us case by case and look at that. Let us look at that. Maybe you've got somebody who wants to put a small home or a mobile home or something like that for grandma. Well, it's gonna have to perk to have a septic tank, so you're not gonna have too many worries there. Most of that land is not gonna do that. Basically, what we did is we took a sliver and opened the door to say, "You can come and ask and have the conversation." That's all we did. All right, if you're, when you see flooding, where is, where is it, where's the worst flooding you typically see? Certain areas of downtown Hendersonville, some areas like that. Well, the cities have their ordinances and their codes, right? We're talking about in the county rural areas. Not all the flooding, but a lot of it. And some, I mean, some land is never gonna be usable anyway, sadly, but it is. Hope that answers your question.
I'm an infister and I live in Tuxedo, Circumania area. I'd like to thank David and Jay for always answering my questions. It's been great. However, I have a big question now and I'd kind of like to, I'm sorry, I'm gonna try to make this fast. But if I told you a sex offender was moving in next door, what would you do to protect your children? Well, I didn't have a sex offender, although I have had people expose themselves next door to me. But my question is, where do my rights start and yours end? Because I had a guy living next door build a shack. Our county manager, who makes 175,000, or 170,000 a year, promised me he would have the guy take down his shed he built, board by board, if the guy did not comply with the zoning and planning, which it's five years later and he doesn't comply. The guy next door to me had a jury verdict convicting him of construction fraud, unfair deceptive trade practices, negligent misrepresentation, which I've told my county about for five years. He's moved in campers and rented them out. It just never ends. Is anybody in charge in Henderson County? Does anybody give a damn that I've got people exposing themselves, renting out campers and doing all kinds of stuff? Do we have a zoning and planning or a county manager that cares about the citizens of this county? Okay, David, Jay, and I'd like to hear what Sheila has to say about who's gonna control this place.
Well, you know, the whole county is zoned. It was zoned in '07, so I'm familiar with your case. And, you know, from my understanding is he got all his permits, did everything that he was supposed to. That's what I've been told.
And so three months ago, he built a second story. No permits from my neighbor coming in. He sawed down his mailbox, see, man, it's the Wild West.
Well, I understand, yeah, and I, I looked, you know, I was, I asked him supposedly, you know, from what I've been told, he is within compliance.
And my neighbor turned him in, then he got a permit.
Well, the mailbox thing, the mailbox thing is, that's, that's a civil case, okay? We do have zoning. Your property, your property rights, my property rights. Now, there, if you go back to old law, the way it should be, everything is permitted until it approaches upon somebody else. That's the way they viewed it back then, okay? That's the way that the, the zoning law that we currently have today was developed, okay? So, but, you know, that, it's not that he, you know, walks around his property or something, you know, like that. But, you know, if he meets all the building codes and everything, that's all the county can do. And if, if they go out and inspect it and they come, and the inspectors say he meets codes and he's applied and paid for his permits, I know it's frustrating to you, I, you know, my attorney told me one time, he said, "The law is not meant to handle interpersonal stuff." You know, your neighbor's obviously a pain in the neck, so.
All right, I'm gonna step in. At this point, it's, sorry, Jake and Sheila, we're gonna go on to the next speaker. We only have three people left. It's 8:02 Lions Club. I'm so sorry, we're gonna try to wrap this up, but I do want to let these people who've been waiting. If you could just please keep the commentary and just ask your questions, that would be fantastic.
My name is Janice Parker. I live in Hendersonville. And my question, well, Henderson County some time ago voted to, a refer, um, oh, what's it called? To make Henderson County a constitutional county. So my question to you is, I want people who represent me who think that their primary objective is to protect my inalienable rights and I like what David said, you know, you can do whatever you want with your property until it infringes on somebody else. We've moved away from that and we need to get back to it. So are you going to stand firm, even when the pressure comes, to waiver away from that? And I can give, give an example of when Jay did that back on the masks for kids at the school board. First, he said, "No masks," and then he wavered and he said, "Yeah, I gotta wear masks." But anyway, are you gonna stand firm for our rights? That's my question. All of you?
All of us.
Well, yes, ma'am. I am consistent in my votes. You know, I am a constitutional conservative, so yes. I do, you know, as I said in my opening thing, you know, you should know pretty much how I'm gonna vote, because I am who I am. You know, and I believe my core values don't change.
As well as for the Constitution, I want to let Ms. Parker know that when the governor had made his rules on wearing the masks, they said if you were within six feet for 15 minutes, everybody around you would be quarantined. And I do know that Hendersonville has seven periods. And if you had one person that tested positive, you would quarantine one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight people. And if you multiply that times seven, that's 56 people for each one person, for each one person that tested positive. You would shut down a school. And let me tell you a que, tell you an answer. When I asked my daughter, I asked my daughter, I said, "Do you want to wear masks or not?" She said, "No, Dad, I don't want to wear masks." I said, "Okay, here's another question. Would you rather be in school and wear a mask or be home?" And she said, "Oh, Dad, that's fine, I'll wear a mask." Because I am pro-education. The kids need to be in school. And if you have, if you have a problem or a question about how I feel, then I'll be glad to keep going. But the time's up, and I'm telling you that. Thank you.
I met Alex Mettawas Reach. Back when I was president of the Mettawas Reach Council, I talked to Chuck McBrady because he was worried about our sewer packets. And he told me, he was commissioner back then, District Five, I think, he said the only way out of this was to create these sewer districts that could float them on for 25 or 30 years and take over the maintenance problems and spread it out over that period of time, rather than selling off the Red Bird or Blue Bird, whatever their name is, and, and, and having them spend $300,000 or $400,000 to fix them up and then give us that immediate hit. It seems like the sewer district is, is a better answer. I was going to ask Sheila, she didn't get really to respond to that early, and Jay But in your earlier answers, you seem to understand any part of that, and maybe the rules of change, since McBrady was commissioner, but it just seems like a sewer district. I believe he created one for Sierra Mountains, so it seems like that makes more sense than what we're, what we're trying to do right now.
Yes, it does.
Why don't you do it?
Well, I'm not in a position to do that, but I, I think that you are correct that it would be better to, you know, work with the county and the city to get that infrastructure in place. I would not, I would hope that we could prevent Red Bird or any entity to come in and do a private, you know, treatment plant. I spoke with Mr. Connet yesterday about what can be done about that, and has it, has that been looked at? And he said, "Absolutely." At one point, there was an opportunity, and they had spoken about it, and the county did not want to venture, they didn't want a joint venture. And I said, "Well, I understand that whoever has to take it will be maintaining and, and, you know, repairing and getting it up to par where it needs to be." And I said, "So of course rates will go up a little bit," but, he said, "Well, of course, but at least then you would have that cohesion and get the infrastructure in place without having all of these private entities doing treatment plants." It's just not a good plan.
First of all, I do want to apologize for my last question. You know, I do get very emotional when we talk about my kids and education, so I do apologize for that. But now the question is, and I think we kind of touched on it earlier, but I would be glad to expound on it again. And the question that I understood was, should we kind of create a sewer district? And I am in favor of the city and the county working together. And, and yes, I am not, and no, I am not in favor of package plants. They do fail, they will fail. But you, we, you do need representatives from the city and the county working together to solve this. And I brought up the example of Forsyth County, where there's Winston-Salem, which is the city, and Forsyth County Utilities. If the combination works well, we can model them. They already do it.
Okay, David or Daniel, are you going to want to be working on this? So we've had some, several meetings and conversations with them. The challenge we have here is we bump up against the two things. The city currently owns and controls, not the one out here, but city water and sewer.